Hope you're doing well, missing Effingham probably, aren't you?
Oh, yeah, not much.
Call the regular board meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, with which there is hope, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.
Desha.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Okay, we'll start out the evening with some special acknowledgements. First on the agenda is the EHS Track State Participants. I believe we have our ladies, lady participants with us and our dynamic duo of coaches over there, mother, daughter, Shayna, Scott, and Jenny Phillips. Do you want to fill us in?
Yeah, so we actually had six months to go to state this year for practice plans. I think even one more than last year. We've been continuing to grow. We were very heavy on field events, which was awesome because usually that's where we're lacking. So we were able to take a little shot at her, but also a full holder who's not here yet, that's Kylie, and then Kami and Hyde. So we took those three, and then we also had two 800 runners and then a 4x4 qualify for state. So they really did an awesome job, a lot of them ended their season on PRs, which we can't ask for much more. And then we had two girls who returned back for finals on Saturday, which was Kami and Hyde. She was returning to state for second year, actually, she went last year, and this is the first year that she qualified for finals. And then Keegan, the freshman, she came off on a really strong season last year at the junior high. So we knew she would be really well, and then she also qualified for finals and proved very well to play second overall as a freshman. I'll actually let them try to introduce themselves too and tell you what grade they are going into maybe, and then what Miss A qualified in.
Wonderful.
Kami, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm Kami, I'm going into my junior year. I qualified as a high jumper, and I ended up being sixth in the world.
I'm Nancy Kirk, I'm going into junior year, and I qualified in the 4x4.
My name's Emery, I qualify in the 800 and the 4x4, and I'm going to be a sophomore.
I'm Keegan Kanek, I'm going to be a sophomore, and I qualify for shop, but I got second overall.
So I think the really cool part is most of our athletes were underclassmen, so they are usually back there. Yeah, I think, yeah, I said Kylie Pryor is missing, and then Jessica Larson as well, she appears to be. So we have like awesome athletes. Oh, and then I didn't even mention, but Keegan, of course, is a dual sport. So it was pretty neat to see her balance, not only the shuffle, but also the shuffle.
Wonderful.
The air crowd was all, yeah.
Well, congratulations, ladies. We're really proud of you, and we look forward to seeing what happens next year. We'd like to get your picture, and we'd also like to congratulate you. So if you want to make your way around the table, you'd like to shake your hands, and then Michelle will get your picture. Thanks for coming. I usually round out my speech too by letting the athletes know to make sure you thank your coaches and thank your parents. They're a big part of all of this. Next on the agenda is the EHS Bass Fishing Team. We have your, it was your inaugural season, so we're really excited to get an update on that. We have Coach Drew Daters with us this evening. You want to take it away?
It was a great first season. Probably blew my expectations up a little bit for the next season. But we had nine events over the course of the spring semester on the ICAST Coaches in State Tournament Trail. And then we also sent two teams to regionals, one team to sectional, and then one to state as well. So it was really great. We got four here, five? Yeah, five here. Lucas, Kylie, Kayden, Taden, and Clinton. I'm not going to make them talk. Actually, Kylie, do you want to say people?
I think we should hear from Kylie.
Right.
Kylie was a part of the state team, and then Taden fished on day two as a backup in Kylie's place. She had a wedding for her sister, and it kind of important that she made it to that. So it was nice to be able to have alternates, and then we had another boat captain that went out with them on the Saturday, the second day of state tournament as well. So it was a really good experience the whole, the whole season, and we're looking forward to the fall. It's not school-sponsored, but we will fish probably anywhere from four to six ICAST events this fall, and then here after the spring season again.
That's great. I'm sure with it being something new at the high school, there's probably lots of questions.
Oh, yeah.
So I do have a question.
Okay.
Who drives the boat?
Well, he does.
So the kids, kids aren't driving boats?
No.
Okay.
And that's part of the requirements, the boat captain needs to be 21 years or older, so it has a license.
And so do the kids have to have access to boats, or?
Yeah, you have to sign up, you need to have access to a boat, whether that be a friend, family, or your dad has a boat, or mom has a boat. But yes, that is part of the process, you have to have access to a boat.
Very exciting.
If you don't, there are a few kids that we have who are coming in as singles. We'll try to pair them up with somebody who's got a boat but not a partner. Unfortunately, for the fall season, there's not a lot we can do with those kids that don't have boats. But in the spring, I'm planning on doing some practices and some things that can get them involved, tying knots, learning how to cast, that sort of thing, that we can do off school grounds. We don't have to be in water to do that sort of thing.
Wonderful. Do any other board members have questions like that?
That's a good one.
Walk them through a little more of what, how it takes place though, because how many hours are you on the water?
So the ICAST events were seven hours, right? Yeah, seven hours on the water.
Starting at?
Starting anywhere from 5:30 to 7:00 a.m. So sometimes they, we had, I think we had a tournament in the like of Egypt and Marion. I think you guys like three o'clock that morning. So it's early mornings, and then early makes it afterwards, he goes better than twenty. But yeah, really, really, early mornings, try to get there at least an hour before. Every tournament has boat checks, they check your boat, it's live well, then check you in, make sure you're registered. Then weigh-ins are after the seven hours, those are always the most fun, see where we fall on the field. And those usually just take anywhere from a half hour to an hour, depends on.
The most, the most number of fish that can be weighed?
Five fish at a time, five fish maximum.
Per boat?
Per boat, yep.
And do you, can you use electronic devices? Like, right, or not rangefinders, but, yeah.
Kayden, right, yes, six, six pound, nine ounces, at Newton Lakes, yep.
And are you just fishing for bass, or?
Yes, yes, just bass, yep.
So what's a boat, what's a boat guide do for seven hours?
Trying to keep their sanity, I think. They're not, they're not just out there sitting in the boat and driving the boat for the kids. They're, they're not in the mountains telling them where to throw certain baits or what to use in certain conditions. There's a lot more that goes into it than just driving the boat for the kids.
I used to be a part of the boat, the boat club at the junior high in Jasper County, and I would be a boat guide because I would take my book out there, read my book while we were fishing, because first of all, I'm not somebody that should tell them how to fish. Different than these guys. So it, it makes for a long time though. And it's quite a commitment out of parents in order for this program to be an existence like this. So really thank you to you parents for what you did. Not that parents aren't important in all sports, but you've got to have a boat, you've got to, here's a little more to this one than, than the average sport that we're able to offer.
Right. So we appreciate your help getting this off the ground, and parents and kids, congratulations on a great season. We'll look forward to hearing more in the upcoming years.
Come forward.
Yep, we'll have you come forward and get your picture. You get to walk through the inside of the table and shake our hands, and Michelle, get your picture.
Yep.
I have another question. All right, I have a question for the kids. So which one of you, I mean, have you guys been fishing for a long time? Or is this all new to you? You thought, oh, let's give it a whirl, like, how much experience do you have fishing? I'm the same, have you been fishing for a long time? Very cool. I like to say there's something at Effingham for everyone.
Thanks, guys, girls. Proud of you, appreciate it.
So it sounds like most of them are new to the sport too, which is also very cool. All right, next on the agenda is recognition of visitors with us this evening. We have Kay Pemberton, and she represents Love the Ham. So we're looking forward to hearing more. Yes, if you wouldn't mind sitting in front of the microphone.
Sure. Can you hear me? Good. Thank you so much for allowing me to come tonight. And so Love the Ham is an online platform that matches volunteer opportunities with people seeking to volunteer. And so if I had the chance to take you guys out for a cup of coffee, I would suspect that you guys are volunteering to be on the school board. That for, you have a passion for it, right? There's something in you, your values align with what you're doing. I think it's probably a thankless job at times, and so there's a reason why you do what you do. And so Love the Ham was created so that volunteers could find the opportunities that aligned with their passions, their skills, their abilities. And so the high school, I believe, still requires the seniors to have some civic hours, if you call them correct. And so the reason I'm here tonight is Mr. Johnson allowed me to come and highlight the platform and to show it to you just for a moment. Mr. Johnson, if you could scroll down just a little bit. It's a free platform for the agencies and for the volunteers. And so currently, there's 34 agencies, all in Effingham County. There's a sampling of them, and then right below there, it says view all agencies, which you don't have to if you don't want to. But if you click on one of those logos, it will show you who they are, what they do, the different causes and things, some photos, where they're located, and then the contact information. Directly under that, they have individual needs that are available through that organization. So the idea is somebody's interested in maybe social media. What high school kid isn't interested in social media, right? There's opportunities out there that they can actually go through and research the organization that they're going to be volunteering with, and then have an idea of what they will be getting into, what they're walking into, what the expectations are before they contact that organization. So the idea, again, is just to have an online platform, it's a matchmaking service. And so what I would love, and I'm not sure what is possible and is not, but to be able to maybe brainstorm of how we can promote these agencies within the school district, make them aware that this is out there, and also then, you know, just start that conversation, whether it be ads in the torch or a bulletin board with different agencies here and there, a volunteer fair where they get to come and, you know, talk to the people and what they're doing out in the community so that they can find those volunteer opportunities that align with their passions so that it becomes a thing that they get to do and not something that they have to do. Are there any questions?
When did you start this?
It's been online for about three years.
Oh, really? I didn't realize you did.
Yeah. It's a little slow taking off because, so what we do is, you know, you, we go find agencies and they sign up, and then they're looking for volunteers, and if the volunteers don't know about it yet, it's kind of the circle. Hence why I'm here, because the high school is a large school of volunteers looking for places to serve. And so we want that to be a really great experience for them.
Sure.
How do you envision us partnering with you from the school district standpoint? Do you have any thoughts of how we could possibly, you know, we've got about 500 employees. Of course, then we have students that have volunteer hours as well. You and I haven't talked a whole lot about that, I wanted to see what your presentation was.
Sure.
Any thoughts you have on that?
One of the big things that I think that would be a help, and again, whether you want to pursue that or not, the, the software comes with a lot of tools that help you track volunteer hours, and there's an app as well. So you could eliminate the paperwork of having, the kids having to turn in the forms and all of those things, and the agencies where they serve can also then approve those hours. So if they're volunteering their entire senior year, at the end of the year, they can just run a printout and turn it in. The other thing we, I would love to do is, you know, I don't know, have a volunteer fair, maybe so that they could meet, again, maybe ads in the torch. Again, maybe we bring it, I don't know if it's allowed, bring a TV into the school and have running ads and show the different agencies and the needs that are available. Anything just to bring awareness to the kids. I'm happy to come in and talk to them and do one-on-one coaching with them, even though I'm a certified coach, to help them find the volunteers, volunteer opportunities that match with what they love to do, whether it's computers or, or working with animals, or gardening, or landscaping. It's a great idea or opportunity for them to not only shadow, but to practice those things that they might be interested in pursuing down the road. What is the requirement again for volunteering?
I don't know off the top of my head exactly, but I mean, we have something, but I'm not sure.
Every student has a requirement?
Seniors and seniors before they graduate.
We would tie her to our counselors to be able to.
I was trying to put myself in a senior shoes. I think a book fair or a fair though, a job fair would probably work best. I think if you just hand something to students, I don't know if they're going to read through it, follow through, but if they say, if you, if you tell them, hey, this is your chance to sign up for your volunteer hours, plus like something that you are interested in, I don't know why they would even pass it up. Like, I would think they would just automatically do it.
I would agree.
I'm happy to coordinate events too, if that would be something, again, I'm in contact with the agencies, and so several of them would be happy to host special events if they have opportunities at certain times of the year and things like that. The sky's the limit, I think, it's just a matter of sitting down and figuring out what works.
But you're kind of a conduit to getting volunteers to these organizations is the whole idea behind Love the Ham, correct?
Yes, to promote the organizations, to provide tools for those agencies that have the, there's a lot of tools that are on the backend of volunteer agencies that this software provides for them free of charge as well.
I've got your email, I think, don't I?
Yes, and I've got one to hand out to you too.
Okay, I was just going to say.
Wonderful, if you'll leave those.
Shoot me an email when you sit down at home to remind me, and we'll connect you with the right people.
I mean, the most difficult part is going to be vetting the businesses to make sure it's an appropriate experience for the student.
Correct.
May I add, there is a filter feature on there, and so if you have agencies that are approved by, by the school, we can create an EHS filter, and so they can go on there and they can just see the list of those opportunities and agencies that would be appropriate for them.
Seems like it would sync up to go off a CTE.
Correct. I agree. I think we get tied to that, and we said Gene Cornell's kind of oversees that.
Six hours of community service civics points hours.
I think some of that's changed in recent years too, so, yeah.
It's just the beginning.
Yes.
I just, you know.
Thanks for the, or coming, because I had no idea this existed either, yeah.
We crossed, we crossed paths at the CEO trade show, right?
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for the opportunity, and again, if any of you were available, I would love to take you out for coffee and hear your story about why you're so impressed. So thank you, because I think you probably don't hear that often enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kay.
Yep. And then if he's here for you?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Hannah, Andrew, if you want to, and we'll just pass them around.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay, next on the agenda is the financial report.
All right, so the financial report through the end of June, it's going to look a little bit different. As you can see, we're showing 144% increase over the net fund balance, and that's because of the bonds. The meeting was on June 30th to pay those back, so since this report is through the end of June, June 30th, that's why they're there. Operating funds were showing a decrease of 14% over last year with a net total of $18,211,462.79. Revenue in the Ed Fund, local revenue, we received $183,453. State revenue in the Ed Fund, $891,179. Federal revenue in Ed Fund, $456,973. Those expenses over $5,000 are broke out separate. And then recommendation would be to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of $1,674.02, and the payment of bills in the amount of $1,460,514.69. Does anyone have any questions?
I have none, anyone else? There being none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the financial report to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of $1,674.02, and the payment of bills in the amount of $1,460,514.69. Motion by Andrew. Second by Chad, roll call.
Chad.
Yes.
Desha.
Yes.
Brandon. Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. You have minutes from the 6/23 regular board meeting, the 6/23 closed session, and 6/30 special meeting. Fundraisers, it looks like there's several that the band boosters are getting approval for that run, mostly through the fall, some after the first year. And then there's a football and basketball cheer clinic in there as well. There's an approval for a donation to the Little Hearts Early Childhood Center from St. Louis Community Foundation, but that's via civil design, which is also a local business. Does anyone have questions about the consent agenda? There being none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Motion?
Motion by Erica. Second by Andrew, roll call.
Desha.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
First item I have is the 20, the status of the 21st Century Grant After School and Summer Program. Federal government put a capash on that grant back in, right before July 1st, I believe. From my understanding, there were multiple states that sued the government, and it appears, though I don't have confirmation, that there is a very good chance that that is going to be back on the table and allocated and paid out. What that means basically is, I think we're in a ballpark of this coming year, I think it's like $567,000 of revenue that we would be eligible for, that we, we're promised that we would get for this upcoming school year and for the following school year. Please understand, based on what we've experienced since we received this information, which was January, when we were told, here's how much we're going to get, and we ran the program for the, in the spring, and then we ran it this summer, and it's gone very well, it's done a great job. If we don't have those funds, we can't run that program right now. We are not at a point that we can sustain that program. Our hope was that we would get some consistency from the federal government, put us in position that we would have those funds for three years. So it's got me a little bit fearful at this point right now of the ups and downs and ends and outs, so we've got to be careful in the commitment. So what I would ask you at this point right now to commit to, if you would, is once we do find out that we get those funds, if for sure we're going to get them, then we would come back, we would advertise positions, we would go look to have the program for after school, probably not starting anywhere before September 1st. This might push us back to an October 1st start, just because we were on target, if we were, had the funds, to be able to start September 1st. But there's a lot that goes into this to put us in the driver's seat to be able to do something with fidelity. So I'd ask, if you would, please understand right now it's on pause. I don't want to unpause it right now, because I don't have anything official that says we're getting the funding. If we do get the funding, which could happen tomorrow, I want you to be able, to tell me if you don't mind, yes, move forward with advertising the positions, establish the program, and bring back to either the August or September board meetings, the approval to hire staff and get that program back up and running. If you're okay with that, that's the route that I would like to take. We will hire those positions pending, pending, pending the revenue. If at some point, two months from now, federal government pulls the revenue, we pull the program immediately, until we would have some other source that would be able to fund those programs. Okay, sound good? Okay. Number two, Southside Health Life Safety Project update. I believe it was the last board meeting, not the special board meeting. We came in with a plan to potentially do a parking lot, to do brickwork, to do a lot of work at the Southside building because of health, life, safety eligible items. Some of those were, it was a multi-tiered project, that some of it fit underneath health, life, safety, and some of it does not. We have been approved by the state and the ROE to utilize health, life, safety funds for the portion of that project that could be done. However, we ran into a timeline crunch and the fear of not being able to get power, Ameren to replace, which is the first step over there, the archaic equipment that is there from probably the inception of the building. If we didn't approve that at the July board meeting, or not July board meeting, but the June board meeting, then we weren't going to be in a timeframe to be able to get that project completed before school would start. So I did not want to jeopardize that, so we are, we have, I'm asking you, we're going to put that project off for a year, but I'm just telling you right now, we've been pre-approved for the health, life, safety portion of it. We'll come back with some, probably seek in a month or two, we'll come back to you and start the process again of getting bids and some of those kind of things to be able to look at that project to be completed as soon as school is out next year, so there's no interruption to the day-to-day operations, if that's something you're comfortable with us doing. What I don't want people realizing, thinking is, we've got a problem over there and we're not going to fix it. That's, that's not what we have going on right now. The pause is simply because of the timeline, and I don't want to interrupt. I don't think it's worth interrupting the start of school for those kiddos in that building. Sound okay to you? We'll come back with more information on that. Along that line, on that property, I do believe we're talking with, we've kept temporary power to the buildings that was supposed to have been done by July 1st was my target date. They have missed that, not we, they have missed that, but we should hopefully have it this week. I was in conversation with some local representatives with the power company even today. I was in conversation with some local representatives with the power company even today and hoping to anticipate that that will be up and running, because once that's up and running, we get the air going on in there and our teachers can get in there and get things set, ready to go. Any questions about the Southside projects of any kind? Last one is the torch, and it was mentioned here by Ms. Pemberton, and I didn't plug that ahead of time either. The torch has been paused. I let them know today due to a reduction in funding, but a teacher vacancy grant that we were paying that out of. That grant has been cut 33%, so we lost about 30 to 30,000, 30 to $33,000. The torch costs us about $10,000 per addition, and we did three of them last year and was planning to do three this year. We will put that on pause until we have the funding to be able to do that. Some funding sources that could be approached, but due to the short notice at this point right now, I didn't feel comfortable with us moving forward with any of those, but it could be, we've had people reach out and ask if, if we ever got to a point, could they advertise in there. So hypothetically, and this is not a sales pitch for, but let's say State Farm reached out to me and said, hey, we'll, we'll cover a year's worth if you'll, we can be the exclusive provider of advertisement in your magazine. I do think it's very valuable. I think it's hit a portion of people in this community that don't use social media, very important portion of this community, but at this point it's on pause and I will keep you posted as things move forward, but due to the lack of funding. Questions? That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is new business. The first item in new business is the approval of a lease agreement between TriBar Investments and Unit 40 School District regarding the Little Hearts Early Childhood Center. Who would like to?
I could speak to that. We've worked very well with them. We're fortunate right now, we trade some services that reduces the cost, trash pickup, lawn mowing services, we're mowing it instead of them contracting that out, so it's helped us to reduce the cost, but I'm sure just like anything else in the world today, costs go up and so their cost is going to go up just a little bit. At this point right now, we are not looking to raise tuition costs for those people coming in, but we will monitor that very closely and if for some reason it appears that we're not going to stay at the bottom line solid like we have over the last year, year and a half, then we'll come to you and ask you to raise those tuition prices and be able to offset the cost of rental and things that would cause us to, you know, be in a position to go into deficit spending. We are not deficit spending. I think there's a lot of conversation over the last couple of months about this endeavor that we took on. It is a Fund 11. We do not use district taxpayer money, period, for that, for that, the running and operations of that building. It is self-sufficient. The fortunate part for us versus a private industry daycare center is that we are able to go get some grants and do some things because we are a school, school organization, but that money does not come into the general fund, Fund 10, it goes into Fund 11 when we receive those and it's paid out for the expenses of what it cost us at that daycare. So that's a little bit of clarity to the miscommunication that's gone on also. Any questions about that?
Were there any other major changes to the agreement compared to the last one?
No. Just a little bit of a, just a little bit of a cost.
What was it before?
Well, it was 3,300 to start with and then we backed it back down to about 29, I think.
Okay.
So we're talking about a couple hundred dollars a month increase. And it would, this agreement would run through June 30th of 2027. I don't foresee there being a K through two building built in that meantime, which again hinges on the contractual terms of this, just in case the district would ever be in a position to move that daycare into another facility. Meaning if we commit to this for the two-year period right here, I feel like you're pretty well obligated to that for two years and then we would need to look at that end date to be moving into some other facility if we decided to.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement between TriBar Investments and Unit 40 School District slash Little Hearts Early Childhood Center for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027, at a cost of $3,125 per month. Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the fuel bid.
That's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, there's been two bids and South Central FS was the winning bid. Any questions? I'm looking for a motion and a second to accept South Central FS's bid to provide Unit 40 fuel for the 25, 26 school year.
Motion.
Motion by Erica.
Second.
Second, uh, sorry. Second by Desha, roll call.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Desha.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the first reading of press policy updates. The following policies are for review and public comment. There's no action at this meeting, that will happen at next meeting. One, one, excuse me, 110, 120, 130, 210, 280, 2130, 2240, 330, 450, 455, 4180, 740, 790, 7130, 7140, 7300, 7325, and 880. So that will, that's just a posting of the press policies.
If you could see the board, those of you that are community related here, this is basically what we receive each, every three or four times a year probably. Michelle handles this for us, does it very well, doesn't like doing it because it's, it's a complete pain on how they do things, but, but we don't, we don't purposely read off all the details on these because generally speaking, there is a the change to an a or a we change to a the or something of that nature. There are things in there with some teeth from time to time, but majority of it's just updates of some of those logistical things. So I don't know if the board would ever want more shared with you and the public on that, something to think about for the future. This is, in my opinion, the most efficient way to handle it and if there's something really pressing, we're going to bring that to your attention.
Okay. Any questions? Next on the agenda is the approval of the agreement for professional services.
Sorry, that's me. Basically, we have a 10-year health, life, safety for every single building, set by the school code, which means that somebody, an architect, has to come in and we have to pay them for them to come in and do a survey and to do an analysis of our buildings and tell us what, for instance, if you found tuck pointing that needs to be done at a building such as Southside, that would fall underneath the health, life, safety report. Okay? So at this point right now, for Central Grade School, the Early Learning Center, Eastside Preschool, Southside Grade School, Westside Grade School, Effingham Junior High Facilities, we are at a point for that, that by the end of this school year, we have to have had that on record and approved through the ROE and the Illinois State Board. So we need to pay somebody to come in here and do that. It's rather expensive. Yep.
We had, didn't BLDD come through two years ago and go through the building?
Now a health, life, safety inspection, they did not, they just did a functionality.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. And they only did that for about 5,000, I think is what they charged us to do that initial assessment, which was a really good deal. This is almost 50, just a little over $51,000. As, as you noticed, I did not mention the high school and/or the sports facilities because I believe they were done either last year or before. For some reason, they're on, they're on a different rotation.
And this is only every 10 years?
Every 10 years, correct. Which then when they come off of that, health, life, safety funds, you could go obviously without any concern, not any concern, without any voter approval and utilize health, life, safety bonds to be able to do that type of work. I put some services included, survey, survey above noted facilities, note code violations, developer reports, drawings and estimates, findings, reviews, report, undesignated district representatives, submit 10-year safe, safety report in Iowa's health, life, safety processing system. I, I oversee this in the system. Once they, the architects would do the project, they put it in the system, I have to go in and approve it. You have to approve it at the board meeting and when you do approve it at the board meeting, I go back in and Jill's name is on it as the president and it states the date that the board meeting that you actually approved that at, so that everything's on record and they can come in and audit us at any point to see that we have done exactly what the school code asks.
When will they do this?
Just needed you to prove it.
When they figure out their schedule. Okay, there being no more questions, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the professional services agreement with BLDD architects to develop a 10-year safety survey report as required by Illinois School Code 105 ILCS 5/2 through 312 for Central Grade School, the Early Learning Center, Eastside Preschool, Southside Grade School, Westside Grade School, and Effingham Junior High School facilities for a cost of $51,185.
Motion.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Desha.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the Little Hearts Early Childhood Center Parent Handbook Updates. The suggested changes were highlighted in yellow. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't think there were very many changes either. It was pretty minimal.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve that LHCC Parent Handbook Updates for the 25, 26 school year.
Motion.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Jane, roll call.
Jane.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Desha.
Yes.
Brandon.
Brandon.
Yes.
A little bit of a delay.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
I would also add, if you don't mind, real quick, Denise Pitcher and Chrissy Mezner are the two that are co-running that daycare and everything's going really well. Jennifer Fox had moved on to her new endeavor before July 1st and this group's done a great job this summer, really tied into things, communicating well with me, and I appreciate them at the highest level for what they're doing. So I think we're, I think we're in good hands.
Good deal. Okay, next on the agenda is the appointment of the FOIA and OMA officers for Unit 40. Each public body must appoint individuals to handle FOIA requests and to act as the Open Meeting Act officers. These individuals must complete training provided by the Illinois Attorney General's Office. Shelley Beck, Kelsey Baker, and Andrew Johnson are recommended to serve as the FOIA and OMA officers for Unit 40. Did you need to add anything to that?
Other than the fact that Kelsey's handling it all for us right now, so we're just putting the rest of us in place and.
You guys can take over anytime. That's all I'm going to say.
She needs something, she reaches out to me, but it's, it's a nightmare. It really is. I hate it for her and I handled it all by myself and, yes, pretend, so I've, I've been down the road, she's on right now and it's very unfortunate.
Okay, any questions? I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve Andrew Johnson, Kelsey Baker, and Shelley Beck as Unit 40 FOIA and OMA officers. Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
Chad.
Yes.
Desha.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane.
Okay, that's it on new business. I'm looking for a motion and a second to enter into closed session for the following topics. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district. Litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the public finds that an action is probable or imminent in which the case for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. The third item is collective negotiating matters between public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And the last item is the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 206. Could I get a motion and a second to enter into closed session? Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
Desha.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Jill, can I ask about your questions before I leave?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to double check Andy because you were talking about Southside Health Life Safety. Last month, didn't you say, yeah, we're probably going to have to shell all this stuff, but we're going to do one project?
Yes, and that's now been shelved.
So do.
The only thing that's being completed right now due to various reasons is the Southside mobile classroom and anything that's accessible to it. So if you've been by there lately, you can see that we've got the carports with awnings and basically the tunnel and then the fence. We've got to move forward with some fence pieces, which fences probably will not be installed before school starts, so we're going to be stuck with the temporarys. The weather didn't exactly cooperate this summer.
Yeah.
Even though my grass is green and looks great, it's caused problems elsewhere.
In terms of the price?
It does.
All right. Well.
That, that will be revisited though. I almost, I'm pretty sure the board, through some communications, has said we need to get those fixed, so I do feel they will, but we're not going to disrupt, not going to disrupt the daily activity of our school building while we do.
I missed a couple too, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry. What was paused because of funding? There was two things.
Uh.
The torch.
The torch magazine.
And the 20, 21st Century Grant for the after-school program.
Okay, I got that.
It's just those two.
The torch magazine.
And then the project he's talking about was a parking lot at Southside.
Our parking lot, okay.
Which is going to be something I've got to address with the city and I'm trying to get appointment scheduled sometime with them, because they have requirements that we're supposed to be meeting. They're going to have to give me some grace.
Okay.
I think they will.
So that's paused for right now, the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Parking lot, health, life, safety upgrades to the backside. Wish I could have taken everybody with Todd Taylor and I last night as we were checking all the buildings after the flood that we got, because you can't walk, that area that we're talking about back then, you can't walk without standing water running back towards the building. And so we saw that evidence last night, unfortunately it was dark, so it didn't do me good to take pictures. We're out and shared a bunch of pictures as well. There's probably an inch to two inches of water last night sitting on the backside and the little wedge, I call it, on the backside. So there's no doubt, no, it's completely understandable why we have the problems that we have over there.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's improper drainage also in that area that we don't really handle all the drainage part of, but we're trying to help.
I mean, you have a question.
Do you foresee any of the inspections that they do with this 10-year inspection?
Is it going to help promote the changes that you guys have wanted to do for upgrading the schools? I mean, do any of those coincide with the others?
I would say maybe. I will just tell you on the surface, especially, I will be very careful in those conversations just because I want them to do a fair analysis of our building.
Right.
Without any input from me saying, you know what we need, so.
But from what you've experienced though, from the inspections in the past, because I know you've done this for a long time.
Yeah.
Do you foresee some of those things because you're aware of them already?
Yeah, the biggest problem we have is the K through two building that we need, obviously you can't utilize health, you wouldn't use health, life, safety funds for that.
Right.
Which is about a $40 million project.
Right.
So to get out of these other buildings now, what you're asking me is, could they come in and say that, for instance, one of these buildings needs walls, let's say ELC needs walls, because it's not health, life, safety without walls.
Right.
Right? Could something like that, possible?
That's a whole deal about 10-year life safety, you've got 10 years to...
You got it, and they set it up, right, in three stages, it's basically a one, two, or a three rating. One means you need to get it done in the next six months, two, I think you've got a year or two, maybe five, and then 10. But I'll also tell you, the other piece to that is, is, you know, it puts this group in a bad position if they come back with a huge finding that says $25 million worth of work needs to be done, because then they got to turn around and say, okay, who pays for that? Well, the taxpayer does, because then we go get a health, life, safety bond, and property taxes increase.
But then you're right back to where you guys were trying to approach them again. That's why I'm asking.
Right.
Because I support them 100%, because I know, just from volunteering and spending so much time in the school system, seeing a lot of those needs that other people don't see because they don't spend time there.
Correct.
So that's why I'm asking, because I didn't realize that that 10-year inspection wasn't a thing.
Yep.
So if things come back like that was such a huge expense on them, I guess, I would hope that that would pack that you guys are really pushing to better the facilities for our children and the community.
Correct. I think there is a very good chance it will come back, millions of dollars.
Right.
To what extent, there's no possible way I can guess right now on how that'll play out. Where this boards right now, or our district is currently eligible for about $4 or $5 million of health, life, safety items that we could technically go out and bump for, but those projects that we were looking for in that K through 2 building and some of those things, were going to eliminate us having to put $5 million into something that's old.
Correct, they're just bandings for now.
Correct, the cost is going to be enormous someday, if, if the community and district don't at some point get some things going.
There's always the possibility that if these buildings get so old, they come into the same old, those same sustainability, or is that a possibility with some of the buildings that we utilize now?
Off the record with what I saw last night, yes.[1778.73]